Council for Thursday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three will be called to order at three oh six. At this time, please would everyone join me for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, well, first of all, just like to make a quick statement. Thank you, Melissa Hacker, the consultants, Eric Lashinsky, the city team, for this tremendous effort. But today we're continuing one of our most important conversations in the community. Before we begin the presentation, I want to publicly and very clearly state that the City of Annapolis is one hundred percent committed to the Choice Neighborhood Initiative in partnership with the Housing Authority of Annapolis. This project is vital to residents of Eastport Terrace and Harbor House and to all of our city. Happy, healthy, thriving communities benefit all of us. That is what this project is all about. We know we face many challenges, but I'm not afraid, and the City Council are not afraid of that. We like challenges. At Eastport Terrace and Harbor House, the individual apartments are in disrepair, and the buildings are beyond their service life and not candidates for rehabilitation. Residents' lives are at stake. That is why the City of Annapolis is prepared to move this process forward aggressively. Our residents deserve to have dignity in their lives, no matter their economic circumstances. That means doing the work and making the investment. What we can, what can we in the city bring to the table? We can start by ensuring an expedited planning and permitting process for the project. We can then add in firm commitments to significant investment in both pre-development funding and in community infrastructure that will support and connect the CNI area and the Eastport community. This includes investment in utilities, roads, sidewalks, water access, trails, parks as part of the capital improvement plan. We are also committed to finding additional land for the project to ensure it meets the scale required by HUD. One of the places we're looking at is on Spa Road, the decommissioned DPW site. This area will need its own pre-development work, which we are currently assessing. We're also talking with other landowners to identify other land parcels that can be part of the mix to ensure we deliver a first-class, mixed-use, mixed-income development that meets all the requirements for amenities, connection, scale, environment that is important to Annapolis. CNI is a multi-year project. As of today, we are nearly two years into the process, having convened residents of Eastport Terrace and Harbor House, as well as community stakeholders, in community meetings, design shirets, and meetings with developers and builders. Numerous city staff have contributed hundreds of hours and time and significant effort in this work in partnership with Hacker and the project team. I thank everyone for their investment, time, and energy. CNI is about reimagining public housing. We can't continue with the models that no longer meet the residents of our city. CNI is about community, environment, mobility, accessibility, and more. Even before we put shovels in the ground to redevelop these communities, we are actively doing work, the work, in all these areas. With our latest bikeways grant, we are connecting bike paths so that folks who don't own a car can safely get from their neighborhoods to jobs and in and across the city. With the dredging work and redesign of Water Access and Hawkins Cove, we're making connections to the water with transportation systems coming online, including our new ten-minute trolley. In Eastport, we are making vital transit connections. We do have our challenges. The city is being sued through civil litigation. We have to be realistic about the complications that presents. As a self-insured entity, the city doesn't have many options for how we respond to litigation, but we are not going to let that impact our commitment to CNI and to making our residents' lives better. That is why I want to be clear about the level of commitment we bring and the fiscal and capital investment we are prepared to make to move this project forward, regardless of any outside complications. Reimagining public housing in Annapolis is not just about possibilities. It's about changing people's lives. I can't overstate this. When we make lives better for one part of our community, we make lives better for our whole community. Yes, we have challenges, but we also have amazing opportunities. I look forward to hearing from our speakers today. I thank them for all they are doing. I encourage everyone here and everyone watching to engage in this conversation. We can make a real difference. Let's do the work to do just that. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please.
The first item on the agenda is ID one thirty-seven twenty-three, Eastport Choice Neighborhood Initiative Transformation Plan.
Welcome. Thank you.
Before we hand it over to the consultant team, I just wanted to provide an introduction to the project, reintroduction for some of you, Eric Lashinsky, Chief of Comprehensive Planning for the City of Annapolis. As you know, I juggle a lot of different things in my role here, and this has been one of them. I would say it's been a monumental effort by a lot of staff from the City of Annapolis to be involved in this project. We have an all-star team. We have partnered closely with the Housing Authority and Melissa Maddox-Evans, Executive Director, her staff, for nearly two years on this project. As you may recall, the consent decree from past lawsuit had the city do a number of things to start to work more closely with the Housing Authority on housing initiatives. This project is one of those. We have a new staff member, Denise Ruffens, who's here, you may know, our Housing Afforded Specialist, Teresa Wellman, still the person who oversees most of our public housing work in the city and other affordable housing projects. I'm the comprehensive planner, and the reason why I'm involved in this project is much more than housing. It's a comprehensive approach to neighborhood reinvestment, revitalization, improvements to environmental assets, transportation investments, and really aimed at integrating this city's largest public housing communities into the surrounding city. And it's all for the betterment of people's lives, the larger city. It's a huge asset, and housing affordability is a major problem in the city today. It's a huge focus of our draft comprehensive plan. One of the best strategies we have is to preserve the affordable housing options that we have today. So this is just one of the strategies we're using, and I'm just thrilled to be able to advance this project. We've had, I just want to acknowledge the different departments from the city that have been involved in this. It's a number of people from planning and zoning who I already mentioned. In fact, our director is also obviously very involved. We've been briefing Chris Takubiak, our new director on this project, he just came on board. But we've had contributions from Public Works, Wreckin' Parks, police, transportation. We've had staff from those departments on our neighborhood task force, and that has really been the foundation of our process. The community involvement has been extraordinary, both from Haka residents and residents of the surrounding communities. I think, and what we said from the beginning, is this is not a typical development project. This is not a situation where a developer is coming in with a vision and the community has to then, you know, decide whether it's the right thing for, this is a grassroots effort. We started from the ground floor and looked at what we have today and the opportunities here, and through a number of community workshops, we came to the plan that consultants are going to share today. So, yeah, I'm really, I'm really excited about this and excited to hear your thoughts on it. So hand it over to Ray.
Thanks, everybody. So, quick question first before we start. Is there anybody on council that this is the first time you're hearing about anything related to Eastport Terrace Harbor House planning effort? So I'm going to assume that that's a no. Everybody is at least had some basic understanding about what this project is, and great. So what we thought we would do today is walk you through the plan itself. As you've heard from the mayor, you've heard from Eric, this is a collaborative effort between the city and the Housing Authority, as well as the community. The plan is really a series of plans together. One element of the plan is about how we support our public housing families to ensure they have better outcomes. One element of the plan is about how we redevelop the public housing site itself. And another element of the plan is the neighborhood that surrounds the public housing site itself. And part of that is this idea that it is not enough only to worry about how you redevelop a physical development, but the community context in which that development sits. And the families who are most impacted by this has to be a part of the long-range planning as well, because success, the way we define it, includes ensuring that families who are most impacted are able to benefit from redevelopment efforts like this. So as we walk through the planned elements, keep that in mind, okay? The other thing that we will do today, after we've walked you through the elements in the plan, so you'll understand how we got here, is then have a conversation about how we turn the corner from planning, which we are wrapping up right now. We will be submitting this plan to HUD in November, and that will officially conclude the planning effort. But the work isn't done with the plan, right? So how we move then towards implementation becomes part of the conversation. I'm acknowledging what the mayor said about some of the commitments that his administration and the rest of the city will be looking to make, because that's going to be important to be able to make this plan come alive from beautiful ideas that emerge from our community process, okay? And then we'll take any questions that you have. And before we get into the plan itself, I want to remind you, for those of you who participated in the planning process, the community came together, and community in this case includes the residents who live in the public housing communities, folks who live in the neighborhood, and stakeholders near and far who had something to say about this planning effort. And I wanted to remind everybody that this was the vision that was agreed upon through this planning process, the idea that one Eastport for everyone should be how we think about this plan, right? So right now, if you walk in this neighborhood, you have clearly a public housing community, predominantly low-income, surrounded by a community of great affluence and disconnected, right? So the idea is this plan is about ensuring that everybody can benefit. So I wanted to just remind you about this. This came out of our community process. And then before I hand it over to Matthew, who's going to walk through the plan itself, we have organized the plan in sort of three overlapping goals. And the core three goals are really this idea of investing in family success. And this is the element that's focused on the families who live in the community now. The idea that we are attempting to reconnect both people and places. So you break down this separation between those who live in the public housing community and the neighborhood that surrounds it. The idea that we are making it easier to improve connectivity in the neighborhood, improve walkability, improve infrastructure, improve the ways in which everybody gets around, as well as engage with each other. And then the third core goal is this idea that the development that we embark upon needs to be both equitable and sustainable. So those are the goals that embed this plan, and as we walk through the elements, just keep that in mind. There's a lot more details in the written plan itself, and when you can't sleep at night, you can read that. We have a lot of materials on the website. I do want to remind you of a couple of core principles as well. One of them, which is really important to the Housing Authority, to the city, as well as to HUD, who is funding this planning effort, at least part of it, is that this plan cannot result in any displacement of our existing families who live at Eastport Terrace and Harbor House now. So we are replacing all of the existing units that are here today. But the idea is to introduce mixed income as well. So right now, we have this very heavy concentration of very low-income families. At the end of construction of this plan, we have preserved all of the existing housing. We have introduced new mixed income opportunities so that a range of housing affordability is introduced in the neighborhood. And then where you have a single style of housing now, the idea is we are introducing diversity of housing types. And then the last thing that I want to point out is looking at these strategic partnerships outside of the public housing site itself, so that we can expand the development footprint where possible. What does that look like? It means that the Housing Authority has been actively talking to private developers about what a potential partnership could look like, and that will be an ongoing conversation. We've obviously been looking at land opportunities off-site so that we can expand the development footprint, in part in response also to the density challenge, all right? So, Mr. Matthew, you want to walk us through the planned elements at this point?
Great, thank you. There we go. Can you hear me now? Perfect. Thanks. My name's Matthew Fitzsimmons with Howard Copeland Mox. Happy to have been participating in this process as kind of a planner, facilitating the process along with Ray. And I say that because the, I think the diagrams that we're going to look at, the framework diagrams we're going to look at tonight, really have been created by all those people who invested in the evening meetings that we had, from the kids that we met with in the playground to the adults in the evening, to the parties that Haka hosted. All the input that we received through design shiret, the visioning sessions, the review of existing conditions really informed this process, and so I'm just happy to be able to like maybe illustrate that for the people who participated. To begin with, this is our site today. To the council folks on the right, I'm trying not to point the laser close to you, but I guess I can't really point up there anyway. So this is kind of a bird's eye view looking down on the existing conditions. About twenty-seven acres, if you include some of the public right-of-way that's inside the site. These buildings were built in the sixties. I think some of the things that are critical to think about, as the mayor said earlier, they're beyond repair. Other issues include, there's not a lot of housing diversity here today. There's a couple, there's a townhouse type of unit, and then there's the garden apartment, like just an apartment building with stairs that get up and down to those units. And that presents some challenges for visibility. People who have disabilities may find it challenging to climb those stairs to visit someone. And then in addition, the true sense of the accessible unit, very anemic here. Typically, we try to provide more than five percent. Today, there's much less than five percent available to future tenants or existing tenants. So that's a big issue. The, if you've been through the neighborhood, you recognize from kind of the aesthetics of the buildings, they're very distinctive from the surrounding Eastport community. They kind of have that kind of post-war barrack feel, very monotonous, repetitive kind of patterning to it. And then the other big, from a land perspective, it's, it is a super block. There's not a lot of streets that go through this neighborhood. The public spaces that are there today are internal to the site, which makes it feel very isolated. It allows for unwanted activities to perhaps rise up and happen there. And so I think what we heard through the process of trying to create that healthy, safe, comfortable place, we wanted to kind of invert some of these, these design ideas. We wanted to make the public spaces really feel public, where people could have natural surveillance and feel comfortable there, meet people. And we wanted to transform this community so it felt more akin to the surrounding neighborhood, smaller block sizes, buildings that actually address the street, allowing streets with shade trees to kind of come through the site and reconnect to the street grid of Eastport. And, very sensitive, excuse me. So this is our proposed concept plan, framework plan. Again, it's a plan view looking down. This reflects, again, we had seven design shred ideas from, from the design shred that we took back to the office. We tried to create some synthesis of all the common themes, and there were basically three common themes. One is trying to create a central open space for the neighborhood, linking, trying to find connections, links to the surrounding neighborhood, either through roads, through connections to Hawkins Cove and over to Chuxton Park. And then also in terms of creating that diverse, diversity of housing types, applying that diversity, but using different scales, sizes of buildings to transition from the smaller-scale surrounding neighborhood to larger-scale buildings that could really shape and reinforce the, the, the edges, the size of kind of the Central Park and the streetscape through the neighborhood. What would kind of evolved through that process is this kind of linking of open spaces. And I think the big open spaces that we tried to latch onto is reinventing what Madison Street is today. And we'll have, we'll look at a section later, but using Madison Street as kind of the gateway, this main spine through the neighborhood, and then having, having a gateway park, which is on the east side at President and Madison Street, creating an open space that feels comfortable in scale, transitions from this adjacent community into this, into the redevelopment. And then using multifamily buildings or mixed-use buildings to kind of create what I'm considering like a kind of mini Main Street, very similar to what you might find in downtown Annapolis, but here, instead of having, instead of having intensive retail, we're looking at small retail, office spaces, community services, service providers for the residents to improve, kind of improve the wellness of the community, opportunities for doctor's office, dentist's office to be provided there. And then linking that, using that kind of Main Street to kind of create a threshold into the Central Park, where we have opportunities for recreation, play space, socialization space, and then providing kind of a small recreational facility on the other end, the western end of the Central Park, and allowing that to link back to Hawkins Cove. So we're kind of building off of some of the projects that are happening now with Hawkins Cove. And then we'll talk later about the, our early action activity at the eastern end of the site. Sustainability is important to this project, particularly since we're so close to the water. Again, we're going to, we've, we've taken a great advantage of trying to incorporate the landscape design, the streetscape design into creating stormwater management features that just feel natural and inclusive to the site. Again, looking at trying to improve our tree canopy to reduce urban heat. Again, looking at trying to improve our tree canopy to reduce urban heat. And again, we, we took an initial take at kind of a LEED ND standard, that's LEED for neighborhood. We scored really well, so hopefully that will carry through with creating green, green buildings throughout the neighborhood. Again, just kind of thinking about some of the, the open space network. Again, the open space network being very much tied into the stormwater management strategy and our response to the critical areas, which again is important to all communities on the bay. You can kind of sense there's a gravitational pull of the green spaces closer to Spa, to, I'm sorry, to Hawkins Cove. And that's really being driven by the need to create more pervious surfaces closer to the water. Again, trying to take advantage of all the aspects of the landscape, the streetscape, to take advantage of stormwater management, tree coverage. But then with that, creating this open space network, where the public streets, the pedestrian-oriented streets, all connect to a series of diverse open spaces throughout the neighborhood. And we'll talk more about it, but you can see some of those images that we use for precedence to, to really encourage people to think about what those open spaces could Again, it's not just about housing. We are looking at providing a variety of services and amenities to the residents and to the larger neighborhood, including kind of retail, where it's up at the front of the, to the kind of central east side of the site. And then really work, continuing to work with YMCA as a very important early education provider for the neighborhood, providing there, you're having those services, you know, within walking distance to so many, so many families, and within reach of open spaces for the kids to kind of break out and enjoy the spaces there. But it's also, the housing plan is not just about the redevelopment itself. We're actually looking at finding, securing, prioritizing funds and resources for the residents of the neighborhood to help them remain in place, improve. And it's not just for the homeowners, but for what we call the market affordable housing. There's a series of apartment buildings nearby. So trying to find ways that those renters and those homeowners can stay in place in the neighborhood and continue to be a part of the vibrancy of Eastport. Again, getting back to the public spaces, the Central Park in, in the plan really has a large recreational component, from play space to the relocation of the beloved swimming pool and gymnasium space. But in, you know, introducing shade structures and things like that to make it more durable throughout the year, particularly as we face hotter, warmer summers. But then there's a series of other open spaces throughout. We tried to, and again, the intent of these open spaces is to be adjacent to the streetscapes, be adjacent to public sidewalks. So these spaces feel welcoming to, to everyone, even the neighbors around, around the redevelopment site. And trying to find a diversity of uses, and some uses that may have compatibility with the surrounding neighbors, like a community garden space that could be located in between the neighbor, the new residents and, and the neighborhood around it. At the neighborhood scale, again, the redevelopment of the housing site plays a kind of a critical point of perspective, as well as bringing some of these pedestrian and bike corridors together. Madison Street, as we kind of envision it, will be, will be transformative in providing extra width, safe sidewalk width for, for multimodal pedestrians and cyclists within the neighborhood. But using Madison Street as a connector, both to Hawkins Cove, and then looking at how do we advance shared-use pathways to the west and connect more easily to Chuxton Park, just making that trip so much more accessible for the, for all the neighbors or all the residents of Eastport, including the redevelopment site. But we also looked at how can we improve the neighborhood pedestrian sequence east of the housing site, along Madison Street to the shopping center, but also looking at a kind of a, continuing the language of Safe Route to School, to Eastport Elementary One of the big, I guess, critical components of this, to really help energize the planning process, was early action activity. This is, again, $100,000, am I saying that correct? Thank you. And this was really an opportunity to get people excited about this transformative process. We heard from a lot of people what they wanted to see here. They wanted to see something at the front of the redevelopment, opportunities to transform kind of the bus stop into something more colorful, ways to calm traffic, but also to celebrate the pedestrian connections. Currently, there's really not a strong, visible crosswalk at Madison and President Street, but hopefully with this grant, which is, you know, hopefully will get implemented soon, we'll see a new front corner of the site that's going to be transformative, like the image in the lower right there. And then continuing that, from, from that early action activity at Madison and President, you know, looking at short-term strategies to improve pedestrian access over to the Eastport Shopping Center, in our numerous observations of people walking and biking or pushing a stroller, people are often forced into Madison Street because of utilities and other obstructions to pedestrian way. So trying to find some low-hanging fruit, what they kind of call tactical urbanism, things we can implement now, to make that more, more comfortable, a safer experience to get to the shopping center, while we can maybe think more strategically long-term at improving that streetscape from the housing site over to the shopping center. And then going back to the housing site, looking at this, the street network, I think bringing in the existing Eastport grid into the site is pivotal, allowing pedestrians, visitors to come into the site, really placing the buildings at the edge of the streetscape to really reinforce natural surveillance, putting eyes on the street for a sense of safety, and then using those pedestrian streets to link up with those open spaces that we just talked about. Case in point, Madison Street. This is the top section. I know it's a little hard and small to see, but that kind of gives you a general sense of what's there today. It's, there's trees along the edge of Madison Street today, but there's also parking at the edge of the streetscape. There's also dumpsters at the edge of the streetscape. So that whole image of coming to Harbor House is kind of, it's not very graceful when you have to walk past dumpsters and parked cars. And so what we really want to do is transform that into this section on the bottom, using that, the, the tree planting to create shade, to treat stormwater management, expand the sidewalks so kids, families, people with mobility challenges feel comfortable and safe walking along that street, and bringing the buildings closer to the streetscape to really create a stronger sense of natural surveillance on the street, particularly when we have ground-floor uses, like the retail, the amenity spaces, to help activate the streetscape in that, in the middle of the redevelopment. And then along President Street, again, this is, I think with this redevelopment, we're looking at being more context-sensitive than what's there today. On the top section is kind of the current condition, the house on the right, it's kind of the general setback warehouses are today, just around the edge of, of Harbor House. And you can see on the left-hand side of that upper section, these, these multifamily buildings are, again, set back, separated from the public realm by parking lots, dumpsters, services. And what we want to do is really bring smaller-scale housing choice closer to President Street, but setting them back comfortably so it kind of matches the character across the street. Again, one of the big drivers in this process was to transition the scale of housing from smaller scale at the edge, and allowing it to kind of build up closer to the public spaces in the middle of the site. And so that kind of covers a lot of the physical elements of the planning process. I'm going to hand it back to Ray.
Couple of things I just want to zero in on, that Matthew talked about. On the housing program itself, I just want to make sure this is a loss onsite. This plan is looking at a program-
Ray, if you could just do your microphone, so we keep, we're recording, so thank you.
Just wanted to highlight a couple of really important points in terms of elements of the plan. The housing program itself, you're looking at 600 to 650 units onsite. So I just want to flag that. That is inclusive of the replacement of all of the existing units. The net new units that are coming in are what we have generally been referring to sort of workforce housing, as well as market-rate housing. So that's one thing I wanted to just zero in on. The second thing I want to zero in on is this is a mixed-use community now. Right now, the plan is looking to introduce new amenity spaces that Matthew talked about. There are some that exist right now. There's an existing pool, there's an existing gym, the, the Housing Authority's converted some space for some early learning. Those kinds of amenities are preserved, improved, and expanded. But we are growing the early learning program with the Y, and so that is a big additive I wanted to point out. The other important mixed-use element in the plan is the Housing Authority offices are here now, and the plan replaces them onsite. Now, if in the future there are opportunities that the Housing Authority could be rehoused somewhere else that is reasonable and cost-effective, sure, but they're presumed to be on the ground floor of one of the residential phases. I just wanted to remind you about that. And because the residents spoke loud and clear that the pool cannot be eliminated, there is a replacement pool that is here, and then, of course, new amenity opportunities. I just wanted to remind you about that. And then the other couple of things I wanted to zero in on, which are not physical graphs on the plan, the people, the people, the people. So when we talk about investing in family success, for example, what that translates into is by having these new early learning slots, our families who are eligible, right, zero to two and three to five, have priority for enrollment in those early learning slots when they are constructed. And the Y, what's great about that partnership is they have financing to come and help with the construction of the new early learning campus. So that's an example of what I mean about helping to support families who live here. And the research is clear on investment in quality early learning can be a game changer for our kids. So that's one. The second thing around investing in family success that I wanted to speak to is improved community safety. While the actual incidence of crime in the neighborhood is quite low, the perception of crime is higher than the actual numbers. And so many of the improvements that Matthew talked about are also being contemplated through the lens about how to improve safety in the community, some of which will be redesigning the physical spaces in such a way that we are promoting certain seped principles. But then also, the investment in employment and workforce opportunities for families is also a part of that. There is a component that focuses on improving health and wellness for families as well. And then also, we've got a significant number of families who have some level of disability, either for themselves or for their children. This plan has to work for them too. So I just wanted to zero back in on some of those elements in the plan as well. How do we get all of this stuff implemented? Well, the idea is we're going to bite the elephant in small chunks. One of the important chunks here is we have been working with the city to identify off-site opportunities because we are looking at a fully occupied site. And the goal is to be able to build housing first, if possible, so that we create new housing opportunities that serve also as a relocation resource, but also families can see new development happening before anybody has to move. One of those opportunities is Spa Road. This is a city-controlled site right now, and the city is actively in the process of exploring ways in which we can get this parcel positioned to be one of the early start phases. I don't know if you want to say anything else about this one.
I'll just qualify this by saying, you know, there's obviously a lot of things we still need to learn about the history of the site that would make it suitable for new housing, and, and our Public Works Department is, is working on, on that investigation right now. And, you know, once we learn whether there is a cleanup needed of the site and what the extent of that is, you know, we'll be able to plan for any necessary mediation to make sure that it's clean and ready for whatever comes next. But this is obviously also a very sensitive site. It's close to Spa Creek headwaters. You know, so the, the actual footprint of what could be developed on this site is a small portion of the overall site that the city owns. A portion of it is already permanently dedicated as recreation space, that's the former Weems Whalen Field. And that's a separate project that the city is, is trying to move forward right now as well. So we think there's opportunity to do something here that's coordinated with the larger project, and we're just doing everything we can at the staff level to, to make sure we have it all buttoned up so we can be sure of that.
And what this translates into, we have estimated we could get another 96 units here, approximately. And so if you think about the onsite program, that 600 to 650, this is another 96 units. And the idea, again, is to think about how we integrate both sites and the opportunities that that brings. So that's our first getting started, actively in process with the city right now. We pivot back onsite, and so, as you can see on the right of this map, there's a ball field and the Housing Authority offices. So what we have talked about with the Housing Authority, as well as the community, is the concept of starting onsite where there would be the least number of families who would have to move. So this is why we have zeroed in on this site as the first phase of the onsite development. So while no residents have to move in this first phase, the presumption is that offices would have to be relocated to make way for the construction of this first. So this is how we have approached getting started with redevelopment of the site. There are a couple of other sort of business issues and programmatic things above and beyond the physical plan itself that we wanted to touch on with you. And one of them is really that, as this is a collaborative planning effort between the city and the Housing Authority, sort of an adoption of this plan as the definitive plan for this area to guide future development in this neighborhood. So this is one of the asks that we would make of the city to officially adopt this community-supported and community-driven plan, so that it sets the hard edges around the vision, the values, and what we're trying to achieve here. Part of the reason we think that is an important first step is, as the city and the Housing Authority explore the future possibility of, you know, applying for Choice Neighborhood's Implementation Grant, having adopted plan helps in terms of advancing that effort. A lot of what Matthew talks about, and I'm sure you know this, is not inexpensive. We're going to need a lot of money to pull this off. And so right now, we are working on refining the cost estimate. We are over $300 million when this is all said and done. But the assumption here is that we would be looking to federal sources, we would be looking to local philanthropy, we would be looking to the city, we would be looking to tax credit financing, debt, you name it, a whole menu of potential sources to pull this off, including funding that will be needed to support families, right? So a piece of it is building units, improving infrastructure, improving sidewalks, building new parks, but how do we also support families, all right? So we are talking about needing to secure significant amounts of financing over eight-plus years. This is a project that we assume is going to take a good eight years or longer, and I want to make sure that is not unclear, because fully occupied site cannot be redeveloped overnight. There are no resources in the city to absorb that many families. And so the idea of phased redevelopment is what we're looking at. But as we showed you earlier, starting on two sides, Spa Road being one, and onsite that has the least impact on families, at least to get started, and then families can move into new housing, and then we make way for the balance of the site. We have put up here, and Eric has touched on some of these as well, what we're going to need from the city to help move this- what we're going to need from the city to help move this project along. And some of the simpler things is really about this streamlined review process, right? Because this has been a very open, transparent planning process. We've met with planning and zoning, and then the planning commission has provided their input. And, you know, so the idea is by the time we now get to actually redevelopment, we have moved a lot of the conversation along so that we really can get to a much more expedited review process. This is one of the things that we hope the city would be amenable to. And because Mr. Eric here is in planning and zoning, and he's been a part of the process, he will help move it through internally at the city. And coincidentally, the rezoning, because the city is going through their comp plan, process right now, and all of the proposed changes are meant to be compatible with what is being proposed in this plan as well. So there shouldn't be any conflicts, um, later on. We've already talked about Spa Road, that the city is working on making that site available. Um, and then, of course, infrastructure improvements. You know, the housing authority is not positioned to be running point on public infrastructure improvements. And so the expectation is that the city would take on that role for the kinds of improvements that are needed and are being proposed that are outside of, off-site from the original public housing footprint. Eric talked about Parks and Rec being included and many other departments of the city, right? So the conversation that expands around the open space strategy, continued collaboration with city departments around, um, what the actual implementation plan for some of those subsegments, um, would look, would look like.
And I just want to add that one of the aspects of this right now is, as Ray mentioned, you know, trying to understand what the actual costs are. And, and we're working closely with the city manager's office, Mike and Vicki, on cost estimates. Many of these things could be great CIP projects. You know, they're the kind of things a city should be investing in, um, particularly in this type of neighborhood, high need and, um, under-invested. And so, um, there are things that, that are going to benefit the larger city if we invest in them here. And we're already doing that at Hawkins Cove. It's already a CIP project. Um, the Madison Street, uh, vision that you heard, I mean, would be transformative. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's what we're working on right now as well.
Great. And then this is a perfect segue into financing, right? We need, I did not say anything else about that one. The housing authority has obviously a significant role to play here. And the housing authority is looking to significantly expand its capacity. And one of the big tasks coming up is going to be the procurement of a private developer that will collaborate with the housing authority on the construction of the onsite component of the plan. So stay tuned to that one. We've got a, um, one of the things we're hoping is as the Spa Road site gets further along, that the packaging of, um, sites that incent the developer community to get excited about coming here and say, yes, we want to take on this, is more, um, realized. Relocation. This is a fully occupied site. The housing authority is going to develop a very detailed relocation plan that lays out the benefits and the protections for families. This is a site that is going to be triggering what's called the Uniform Relocation Act. And the housing authority cannot redevelop the site without HUD approval of the physical plan as well as the relocation plan. And so the housing authority will, um, be paying for comparable replacement housing, paying for moving costs. If security deposits are needed when families have to move, um, temporary or permanently, that's part of the housing authority's commitment as well. Mobility counseling for residents so they make good choices about, um, their relocation to make way for redevelopment. Because this is not, these will not be voluntary moves that residents are making. They would be moving as a result of an approved redevelopment action. So I wanted to remind you of that. And so that has to be in place, including the financing for that, um, as well as a lot of counseling for residents well in advance of anybody having to move. HUD, the housing authority land is encumbered. They cannot willy-nilly start redevelopment without also HUD approval of that site. And because this is a phased redevelopment effort, right, parts of that will be a phased set of proposals to HUD for the redevelopment of the site. So I wanted to just remind everybody about this because if there are questions about the speed with which a redevelopment effort goes, part of it, we have to bake in the approval process for the federal government as well, given that the land is, um, encumbered.
So as the team has been explaining the requirements that are needed in order for us to really execute, um, this plan, one of the reasons why we wanted to come before, uh, this body at this juncture is to be able to communicate that in order to actually accomplish this, the, uh, the aspect of the city adopting, uh, the plan is crucial. And, um, and, and one of the ways that, that is accomplished is just a, an in-depth understanding that this plan going forward, and it is actually, as it is right now, not the housing authority's plan. It is not, uh, the city's plan. It is a, uh, joint effort, uh, from both entities. And it is a plan that both entities fully adopt as their own. Because many of these items cannot be accomplished because, uh, both entities are going to have to play lead on different aspects, uh, of executing the plan. And so it's going to be very crucial that the, uh, philosophy behind pursuing this is that this is our plan. This is HACA's plan, just as much as is the city's plan. It's our plan. Otherwise, uh, it will be extremely difficult, um, to move these things forward because, as Ray briefly mentioned, um, HACA does not have jurisdiction over many of the aspects of the plan, let's say, infrastructure or other items. The city doesn't have jurisdiction over, uh, the resident aspect as far as the public housing residents and what their rights are and so on and so forth. So there's going to be a lot of, uh, sharing of responsibilities, whether it is in the pursuit of funding, whether it is in addressing administrative or legal barriers. Uh, and so that's, uh, what, one of the things that we want to communicate along with the, the what needs to happen in order to get this accomplished. It's, it's just the philosophy that, uh, we need to have, uh, as we move forward, with the understanding that, of course, as Ray mentioned, it's going to take many years in a serious commitment, um, to stick with a plan of, of this nature, uh, to go through its, uh, many phases.
And if I just piggyback on something that Melissa said, what's great here, one, you have a community-supported plan, right? But there are great examples all across the city, I mean, all across the country, of housing authorities and cities collaborating on comprehensive plans of this nature, right? This is not, you wouldn't be the first out the gate setting a new principle, a new precedent for how to redevelop a community and implement a transformative plan, right? So it really is about commitment, 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 and steadfastly moving the, the ball along. This is purely just a reminder, this is all on the website, how we got here. This was a four-phase planning effort. Public housing residents, the community, developers, businesses, city staff, housing authority staff, you name it. A lot of voices are reflected in this plan. The plan is also informed by a resident survey of the public housing communities, as well as a neighborhood survey. The plan is informed by a market study. So the program that is proposed has been tested against the viability of the market. And what's great in Annapolis is that the demand for housing is strong and projected to remain strong for a very long time. So we feel confident that the scale of the program is marketable, given the demand, um, here. I, I know you can't see this slide, but this is just a reminder about the structure of how, um, community and residents participated in the process. There were task forces that were organized around housing, around services, around neighborhood improvements. There was a community safety roundtable, for example. We had young planners workshops, for example, that, when was our youngest young planner? Two, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, three or four.
Kids were involved, and adults were involved, and friends of adults were involved. Um, and so it's really just important to just remind you that this plan wasn't just cooked up by city staff and the housing authority. There was a very intentional and collaborative planning process. And one of the things I'm particularly proud of are these community connectors that were residents who were paid to help collect resident feedback, share information, knock on doors, and provide, you know, a conduit to the planning team, um, as well. So, that's a good place to stop and take questions.
I'm going to go ahead and head up first, and then I'll pendell Charles.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. Um, obviously appreciative of the work that everybody's put into this. My first question is, do we know if this can come to fruition if HACA cannot sustain itself in the legal troubles that it's in?
I'm going to take one piece of that, and I'm going to take Ms. Melissa here too.
I didn't hear the complete first part of the question.
Will this project come to fruition if HACA cannot sustain itself in the legal troubles that it finds itself in?
So let me take the piece from the plan perspective, and you can talk about the housing authority.
Mm-hmm.
HACA wouldn't be the first housing authority that has one thing or the other that's going on that might impact the agency. But a plan like this, with city support, state support and financing, absolutely can move ahead. The fact that the housing authority is looking to bring on a private developer to lead on the housing implementation is part of the Y. The housing authority has already messaged that the developer community, the developers who it looks to bring on board would need to be able to have financial, a healthy enough balance sheet to be able to pay for their own redevelopment costs so that, um, this project can in fact get started. And in fact, we're hoping the city can also help with that. The issues that face the housing authority doesn't make it easy or easier, right? But it doesn't completely take a project like this off the table.
So the prospect of having, uh, difficulties with any particular type of legal matters, uh, definitely will make these efforts take a much longer time to come to fruition. Because in order to pursue projects like this, investors, developers, um, large funding entities have to have confidence in the municipality, in the housing authority, and in the political environment of which they intend to, uh, invest millions of dollars in. And so based on just some preliminary feedback we're getting from solicitations to developers that we have asked to, uh, participate in this project, one of the main concerns is the political and legal environment in the city of Annapolis. And so part of that is within the control of the housing authority, and part of that, quite frankly, is not. And so this is why, at this juncture, it's extremely, uh, important for this to be a true success, that, um, we as entities are completely unified, uh, with regards to, uh, pursuing development entities because we have to pitch and propose and convince, um, entities to invest their resources and that they need to have the confidence, um, that their investment is going to be worthwhile. And quite frankly, that there is some sort of return, um, on it.
So how are you, how are you marketing that, considering that we are in the middle of a lawsuit?
Well, what we are doing, yes. Well, we are addressing, uh, developer questions head-on to the extent that we can. Um, you can't ever, uh, as with any entity, any corporate entity, any business entity, you cannot control who wants to, uh, pursue litigation against you. You can, uh, do your best to be able to address all of the issues that are being presented and operate in the best, uh, uh, manner possible from a business, uh, perspective. And so what is within our control, we pursue. Uh, but we are very upfront and honest, and, uh, we deal with the questions that we receive regularly. Um, we were set to actually interview a developer for this very project. And they, for a variety of reasons, decided to withdraw from being interviewed because they were just not sure of the environment here. And that is one of the reasons why we, uh, wanted to come to you. One, to bring you an update on where we are, and to be able to convey that we are at a very important juncture as to, uh, how this type of project moves, uh, forward. And you are always going to have issues, um, to deal with. But at the very least, we have to, uh, be unified as to how we're going to address these things together.
So, thank you. And then I'm just into my next question because I want to give everybody time. How will we, how can we be sure that in this process, you're picking a developer that not only the city can trust, but the residents can trust? We have Wilburn Estates, which HACA was in the process in partnership in development. It's a brand-new property. They have mold issues, ceilings collapsing, residents having to be moved out. How do we know that moving forward, you won't get in bed with the same developer or a developer who has had a pattern of problems within the city of Annapolis? And, uh, it seems, at least since the redevelopment of the Clay Street projects, there have been the same developers partnering with the low-income housing projects. Uh, and they all, all end up having issues in, whether it be the, the project management or the actual development of projects.
That's a great question. So our selection process is a public process. And so from our solicitations to our interview process, to the selection process, everything is done in public forum, uh, and we invite public comment. If there are concerns about a particular developer based on, let's say, past history, um, those are things we take into consideration, uh, during the time of evaluation. Now, you don't know until you know. You know, you don't know sometimes until after the fact that there may be issues. That's why when you craft development deals from a legal perspective, you put safeguards in place so that if a problem should arise, there is recourse in order to be able to address it. It's part of the reason why it takes so long to close a development deal. So for example, for, we started negotiations for the Morse Blum closing. It, that, the negotiations themselves took about six months to iron through because you cannot prevent every problem from, from arising or even seeing every problem. But what you can do is outline who is responsible for what if a problem should arise. And so as we, uh, have relationships with And so, as we have relationships with different entities, we make note of the successes and of some of the difficulties that we have, and we can take that all into consideration the next time we make a developer selection. And so, when we do have proposed selections for developers, it's at our public board meeting. We usually post that we are about to select a developer, so if at any time someone has a complaint, a concern, they have the opportunity to voice that and make their concerns known. So, we encourage people to participate in our public selection process.
Awesome, thank you so much.
And can I just add to this, the last solicitations from the street, you know, the city sat on that selection committee as well as part of the ongoing collaboration. So, just wanted to, you know?
Well, the city, we're liable in that, too. I just hope we don't pick the same. I think there are like three groups that have consistently been picked and have consistently failed. And so, were there promises made in this project for the Spa Road facility? Or is that a hope that the Spa Road facility will be gifted?
I think, you know, the sense of the council was, and I think you passed a resolution on it, Alden Gay.
Did it, in the resolution, did we specify HACCA, or specify that it'd be a part of a CNI project?
No.
No, and I just had the sense of the council that we support some version of something to support this project.
I hope we would not give away that land to this project. I think it could be, it could be of better use, still in the form of affordable housing. I just have significant concerns about the Spa Road property within this project, and that's just me.
And although that could depend on how we subdivide it, there's still multiple opportunities there, and it can look like many things. You know, HACCA owned their land, but HUD makes the improvements, right? It can be a similar thing, right?
So, in any proposal, the city would be giving up ownership of that land?
No.
No, okay. I'd definitely like to follow back up on that, and, you know, any conversations moving forward. In regards to returning residents, I do have questions about that as well. Obviously, it's pitched in any redevelopment that every resident can return, but we know the circumstances vary. And the slide, one of the things that you posted about was lease requirements. And I'm wondering, with the, obviously, the current status of HACCA, and so many units offline, and residents who have bills that are up, you know, thousands of dollars in back rent, and obviously, the city is trying to assist with that, we have a rental assistance program, however, we can't cut checks to residents that have units offline. And so, how do you ensure that residents are able to come back and comply with the lease requirements when they can't pay the thousands of dollars of rent and back rent? And so, that's my first question, because to me, that looks like a challenge, regardless if the project is one or two years away, that's still, somebody has to come up with the money for that.
So, I think the key to that is to get to the root of the reason, and they're all individual reasons, depending on the families, to why persons are not consistently paying rent, and to address those issues. I think there is a grave misconception, particularly in the city of Annapolis, that if for whatever reason a unit is not licensed, that a resident does not have to pay rent, and that is false. The only method for a resident to be able to withhold their rent per se is through a legal escrow process through the courts. And even in that, they're paying their rent to the court until a judge decides what amount the landlord would or would not get. But unfortunately, many residents don't avail themselves of that process. Instead, they decide unto themselves to not pay, which, yes, if you do that for months and months, and maybe years and years, you will find yourself in a situation where the amount is just untenable. And so, I think it's just to stress to residents, you must abide by your lease, regardless of what's going on. It is the obligation of every tenant, not just a public housing tenant, that's any tenant to a landlord. You have to pay rent when rent is due. There are recourses within the lease that outline what you do if there's a problem. But you cannot arbitrarily decide that you are not going to pay rent because you believe that this circumstance provides you the right to not do so. And it's unfortunate that the majority of cases that we find, which is why when we are able to do our lease enforcement, and we do get licenses, and we do begin, we have residents that pay thousands and thousands of dollars in back rent, because they just have not been paying yet.
To be clear, and just so that I'm, I want to, you know, not mislead anyone here. The units are offline, not because the resident wasn't paying his rent, the unit is offline because the unit could not pass inspection, correct?
Well, let's talk about that, because that's a circular issue.
You know what, I think we're gonna try to just keep it on CNI.
Yeah, so, but I will address that directly. So, if your resident does not pay rent with, it limits the resources of the Housing Authority to swiftly address repairs.
I get the, I get the circle.
Well, I don't, well, one thing, I really don't think that that's understood, because you have to pay maintenance staff, you have to pay for supplies and equipment. With, with what are we going to pay that?
If you don't collect the rent, I agree with you.
So, yes, so, it ends up being a factor. It's not the sole reason, but it, yes, it absolutely is a factor.
And I'm not faulting you for that at all.
In the delay of getting the units where they need to be. So, it's not an excuse.
My question back to the CNI thing, just so that we're, I don't want to get into the conflicts of, you know, inspections. If, if this process, this wheel continues of residents not paying rent, or their rent being put in escrow, and HACCA not being able to fulfill the obligation of repairing the unit, the unit will then be offline, and that will put the resident in a problem, or some unpredictable, or at this point, predictable circumstance where they may not be able to be a returning resident at the property. So, that's just what I was getting to. Okay. Community Gateway Grant, and I've talked to Mr. Lashinsky about this previously. I, I think that's a fantastic project. I would hope that, again, the dollars, I think crosswalks are fine, the city can paint crosswalks. If you have a thousand, a hundred thousand dollar grant, as mentioned in the slide or presentation, put that to physical infrastructure, the bus stop, you know, with the roofing, which we just put a new one, you know, at the intersection of President, I think, Monroe. There needs to be one at the, at the intersection of President and Madison. That's physical infrastructure that is longstanding. We've seen what happens when we do the little paint crosswalk projects in town, they're very nice, but they get washed away. That's a hundred thousand dollars down the drain.
Can I, I'm sorry, for this particular one, I do want to just acknowledge that the city and the Housing Authority worked with residents to, over many, many, many months, with a call for ideas, to generate what does the community want to see with the use of those funds. So, that was not a Housing Authority and city decision, elaborate input. And so, what emerged out of that is really a package of improvements right there, not just the painted crosswalks. So, I just wanted to reinforce that, that that came from residents saying, this is what we want to prioritize for that initial grant.
And the scope of work that we put out, we did, we did recently select an artist team to do that project. I'm really excited about it. They've done remarkable work in neighborhoods all over Baltimore and DC, and part of the team has already been working in Annapolis. We included in that scope the crosswalks, bus stop improvements, and neighborhood signage to make more visible the project that we're doing, and the area to people passing through. HUD puts requirements on these funds that they can't just be used for basic infrastructure. They have to, they have to add some higher level of value to the neighborhood. So, it can't just be about adding a sidewalk, I wish, pardon me, wishes it could, but it has to be about placemaking, and sort of enhancing the space, doing something that you're not going to see anywhere else in the city, and that's something we had to follow. So, everything that we produce as part of those early action activities is going to have some, some flash to it. I'm excited about the project.
And so, as it stands, is it, what else is included in that? Because I'm looking at this slide, and it just says, Community Gateway.
Yeah, it's the crosswalks, it's the bus stop improvements, and it's the neighborhood signage.
Two, two last questions, Mr. Mayor. Plan Development Review, that was mentioned a number of times in the Housing and Community Development Equity Commission meetings. Is that gonna, that requires cooperation from the city council, correct?
We haven't, we haven't totally fleshed out what that means exactly, just to be totally honest. You know, I think the idea is that we can expedite, we want to do everything we can to expedite this project and make sure that's a priority, but it may require city council action. Not, not totally sure yet, you know, based on our code requirements, but, I mean, that's the intent, is to make sure this is a priority in terms of review.
Lastly, page 12, or slide 12, the Plan Elements. You've noted incentivize and fund, provide incentives and funding to encourage landlords to improve existing properties to retain marketable affordable rental housing. That funding be coming from the project in its entirety?
So, great question. Some of it could, the expectation, if we go after and secure an implementation grant, that there would be local matching funds, and that there would be some support from the city to expand that. But yes, it would be eligible activity under a choice grant, but the city, there would be a matching requirement from the city to expand a pool of funding like that to existing owners to improve their properties.
Awesome, thank you. I really hope you can get that. I've been trying for four years to get a penny out of the city for housing, and so, if you can get all of this, I will be thrilled, but thank you.
You got two votes here, you and I, Alden Gay, I'm sure. Alden Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sounds wonderful, but I have, I think, six comments slash questions. Number one, you indicated that this is the HACCA plan and the city's plan, but it's also the residents' plan, so I know that was just an oversight. Number two, is there a plan to have a grocery store within this entire plan that you put out to us today?
Well, based on the resident input, that was one of their number one asks, is can we just do a grocery store? To be very, very direct about it, the land, the available land is not sufficient to replace the housing that is required, and also park it, and also add the park and the pool and all of these other things, and a traditional grocery store. So, instead, what we have in the plan is ground floor space that we hope can be used to attract somebody that can come in and do more of kind of an urban retail-type programming. So, it's a land limitation issue, not a desire issue. And to that point, though, one of the things that we hope this plan is positioned to do, though, is there's a grocer not far away, that, you know, supporting, you know, with the volume of housing that would come with the full build-out of the plan, is helping to support that existing, you know, grocery store that's not far. On the side front, I know this didn't quite come up, potential space for farmer's market and things like that, but it's just a limitation of how much space, still, the trade-off between all that we must replace and all the new amenities, but we did look at it.
I know you're talking about the wellness, and that's why I asked about the grocery store, and because food deserts are part of the comp plan.
Yes.
I can switch to Mr. Lashinsky to find out if there's been some discussion regarding something surrounding the community, as Ms. Ray has kind of pointed out, that might be available.
Well, you know, Eastport is our one documented food desert, we do have a section on food insecurity in the draft comprehensive plan. There's not an easy answer. I wish I could say, you know, I'm old enough to remember when there was a grocery store in the Eastport Shopping Center, it's not there anymore. I am excited about the retail space that's built into this plan. It's 5,000 square feet, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's right next to an open, a public, one of the public spaces in the plan, so there's a potential spill out onto that, to have some outdoor programming, like the farmer's market idea. It's right next to the HACCA office, so, I don't want to speak for Melissa, but if the HACCA office was moved off-site somewhere else, then we could potentially expand the retail footprint, maybe. It's along that Main Street corridor of Madison Street that was described. So, I've seen a lot of model, and I follow new, you know, innovations in retail and food markets across the country. There's been a lot of interesting kind of boutique examples that have been successful in similar projects, and I think we can be very specific in who we bring in to operate that space, and the kind of products they sell, you know, make sure they're healthy. I think we can be extremely tailored in that retail space, so.
And I think job opportunities, as well as internship opportunities, would really be a great mix surrounding whatever food opportunities you provide. Number three, displacement. I know that there were some rough patches, from what I gather, when I was working for Anaronda County Public Schools during the time of the Newtown 20 and Woodside, and I just want to make sure that Anaronda County Public Schools is in on this plan, and how we move along, and make sure they're sitting at the table, because we want to make sure that our children don't miss out on anything. So, I know there were a few bumps, I was involved in it when I was working for the school system. We want to make sure that the children, and the, and the residents, and the parents are on board and know exactly what's going, whether it's the bus situation, or whatever it is, that we can ensure that that doesn't happen to any degree as best we can. Assurance there.
Yes, Anaronda County Public Schools are involved in our planning efforts, so, yes.
Good. Number four, we've had some issues throughout the city, older units, newer unit, when it comes to mold, and I'm going to hearken back to something that Alden Gay talked about, as far as the selection of the developer. That is extremely important, and something that Ms. Melissa mentioned, about making sure what you put in the agreement to mitigate, making sure that that doesn't happen again, or that doesn't happen, period. So, because we're totally surrounded by water, mold seems to be a critical part of what we see and do, whether it's from the inspection part of it, or from resident part of it, the health part of it. So, that's something that I think needs to be drilled into whoever the developer, the construction people are, that we don't cut corners, that we make sure that there is sufficient mitigation, things put in place where we don't have a mold issue. I'm clear on that, okay. Number five, I would hope, because we have two very qualified ladies, Ms. Wellman, as well as Ms. Ruffin, who've had local, as well as national experience in this, that they are totally front and center, involved in everything and every discussion, because I know they have great ideas, and they've had great opportunities to do this. So, I just want to bring that to light, that I want to make sure that both of them are part of this, front and center. Yes.
Yes, they're on our team.
And that they don't hold back.
No, in fact, we, yes, they're in every meeting, and we meet regularly, in fact, weekly, to discuss, in addition to all of the other several meetings that we, we have many, many meetings with them, so they're definitely involved, and we value their input.
Thank you, and I know Ms. Wellman is vocal, Ms. Ruffin can be somewhat modest at times. Thank you. And I know Ms. Wellman is vocal. Ms. Ruffin can be somewhat modest at times. That's a joke. So I want to make sure that's included. And the last thing is about youth involvement. And I attended a session with the youth over at the Eastport Community Center a few months ago, and I was extremely impressed by a brother and sister team, who were very excited and involved and engaged beyond their years. I guess, maybe they were 10 and 11, or 9 and 11, but they had some great ideas. And so I immediately went to Mr. Lashinsky, but I also talked to Ms. Tippi, who knew exactly who I was talking about, because she works so diligently with children. And so we had scheduled to maybe get together and have them do a shadow day with Ms. Lashinsky this summer, but he's been a little bit busy. And so we weren't able to do that. But we're looking at dates and where the children are off, because we do have internships that Alderman-Gay has provided the money for. But when they get of age, I think they will be extremely excited about possibly going into the planning and zoning field. And we know that's not necessarily a field that African-Americans have traditionally been involved in. But I think these two, I think, would be perfect. So we're going to set that up sometime within the next few months, aren't we, Mr. Lashinsky?
We definitely are. I have not forgotten about it.
I know. And I think that's it. But thank you also very much.
Thank you. I just want to double down on the youth, because there was quite a bit of intentionality about making sure that we are capturing their voices. And I will say, one of the design products that came out of the process was purely done by youth. And for what it's worth, they came up with the terrific version of this plan, and they wanted a whole lot more density than what we had here in the final plan. But thank you for acknowledging that, because this is their future.
And I think the other thing is to, piggybacking off of that, the youth that have been involved, and I hope we've been capturing their names, we need to put a plaque up where the design, whatever they came up with, to acknowledge what they have done. I think that would be tremendous, because we need to recognize them in this whole operation. And so, Mr. Lashinsky, add that to your list, that we're going to put a plaque up, we're going to capture the names of the students and the youth who were extremely involved, and those who were even peripherally involved in this whole project. And we're going to recognize them in some tangible way, that their names will be held in posterity forever and ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alderman-Turney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much for the presentation. I think we can all agree that elevating this project, this site, is truly, upon its completion, will make us whole again, if you will. I believe that. I have five questions, two of them are a little abstract, and three of them are tangible, I guess. When you speak of units, I was a little confused on the 650. Is that what we're providing, or is that what we're replacing? And do they equal?
Yeah. So, that's the new community when it's fully built out. So we are assuming we can get between 600 and 650 new residential units onsite over four or five phases. And that includes the replacement of all of the affordable units that are there now.
Okay. And assuming the Spa Road site?
The Spa Road site, based on the concept that has been tested, has about 96 or so units assumed on that site.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman-Pendell-Charles. I was going to ask about retail, so we'll scratch that. The, and Rob, I'm sure, is going, might expand on this. I was a little concerned about, you know, the adjacency of the water, et cetera. In the stormwater retention/flooding, is there interface with the city as far as, you know, our efforts in resiliency and flood prevention, et cetera? Is, will we follow our stormwater code, which is very strict?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And one of the meetings we had was with the Planning Commission, and they had very specific feedback about some assumptions that we were making, and that we have tweaked in the plan to address some of those comments. And the other thing, just to also put this on the table, and this is baked into any future developer procurement, the Choice Neighborhood's funding also comes with a requirement to build in resiliency, green infrastructure, above and beyond what we're seeing now because of the extreme weather events. So there are minimum expectations, and then there is sort of this expanding field around, you know, sort of customizing based on location. So in our case, we're coastal, right? And so some of those will get baked in as sort of expanded elements in the design.
And part of what we were discussing earlier is that the city staff would be a part of the actual planning and design of the site. And so those aspects would be incorporated.
All right. And that's, you know, that's very important, as to Alderman-Pendell-Charles' concern about, you know, mold, et cetera. Transit component, is it, you know, our existing city housing is, you know, at end of the road, you know, unattainable, and is, or I believe, you know, as for transit, bus access and all. Are you looking at transit, you know, concurrent with the design, or is it, you know, after the fact? I mean, you know, you talk about connectivity, but we really have to make sure that we have bus access or mobility.
Yeah, I think the-
Not an afterthought, if you-
No, it's definitely not an afterthought. It's actually a forethought. I mean, we, I think with the integration of streets into the neighborhood, we can actually get the bus and a shelter that people are proud about and welcoming, to be located more central to the community, as opposed to the periphery of the community now. So, we want to get the transit, like, at the heart of the community, so it's just easy. You can get off the bus, you can go shop, you can see the dentist or the doctor, go to your apartment, you know, and just try to make that as convenient as possible locally. But I think the, there's new, a new transit, the micro-transit systems coming online.
Micro-transit.
So, we're kind of excited about that. And I think, again, with this redevelopment, if we can get front doors closer to the street, micro-transit can make it easier to locate people individually or clustered together, as opposed to, you know, what we would have to do now, searching through parking lots and things like that to find a door to help people get to where they need to go.
That circle, I actually brought this map up more to speak to the environmental issues, but, you know, that inset map that's there, the smaller, shows the critical area boundaries. So a significant portion of the site is within the critical area, the resource conservation, the limited development. So that's a major constraint in this plan, to see a lot of the open space closer to Hawkins Cove. But that purple dot is where we're talking about this sort of transit hub for the neighborhood, where the, and we brought Marcus into the conversation, and the idea that the President Street route, you know, gets routed through there and picks up there. And so it's just sort of integral to the development.
Yeah. I made a point of you saying that the pervious, you know, you are placing the pervious area, you know, closer to the water for drainage and all, so your cognizance of that.
And additionally, just to those features, where, I think the goal of the redevelopment is to not increase our limit of disturbance. So what's green and forested today, and downhill is going to stay green and forested tomorrow, and a part of the Hawkins Cove
Yeah.
project. And so we're trying to keep our development up high off the slope, and not really create new disturbance to that ecosystem.
Well, you know, courtesy to my colleague, Alderman-Savage, when we redevelop, we should actually be putting something back better than what is there presently for stormwater. So my two last questions, it sort of segues into, one of them, you know, sort of, I don't know what the word is, but you mentioned integration with the adjacent communities, right? So, how, how do you do that when you are, when you are really identifying a mixed income project, right? You're sort of branding it, if you will. And so, how do you create that integration so it doesn't look like it's an isolated development? Maybe that's, you know, the street access, but, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no. You want to go? I think, well, first of all, I think the street, like, just reconnecting the street grid into the neighborhood, as opposed to creating this barrier where there's, there's no, there's no comfortable way for someone who lives in the neighborhood to feel as if walking through the HACCA site is normal. So if we bring these streets in, we have clear sidewalks, we have, we reposition the open spaces, so they're actually engaged to the street itself. It becomes kind of this visually shared feature that people should feel welcome to walk a dog, walk their baby, you know, walk through the neighborhood and feel more connected.
Right.
As opposed to, I guess, the current condition where, you know, the public or the amenity spaces are kind of tucked away out of sight and forgotten about by the larger neighborhood. So we want to try to bring that to the foreground. But I think it also comes down to programming and developing those partnerships with Park and Rec, using the gym, using the pool for opportunities to have more of a relationship with the surrounding community.
Yeah.
And again, taking those facilities, but putting them in a public eye.
Right. We don't want a developer to come in and, you know, have a sign saying, "Welcome to..." whatever.
But as you can kind of see through the site map, if someone were to come from, oh, I don't have my glasses, but they can come into what was, what is currently maybe Eastport Terrace area, walk all the way down the street to the park, or around the corner, back to Madison Street, back to, it's, they're able to, it's a natural walk to the community if they want to go to the park. It's just going to the park.
Great.
Through the neighborhood. It's not going into this development, which is a whole different field
Yeah.
than how it is now. And so those are the kind of spaces throughout the development that we are creating, like the little gateway park at the front, the little area for people to sit. And so, so that it's natural.
It's natural.
And shared.
That's fantastic.
And shared. So right now, everything is for the community that lives there now. This is being designed to be open, welcoming, shared.
Shared.
Which creates more natural surveillance and makes the spaces feel more secure and safe.
Yeah. Eyes on the street.
Eyes on the street.
Jane Jacobs. Last question, and probably the most obvious. In designing this, obviously, did you look at, you know, existing sites and lessons learned, you know, in the siding of the buildings, if you will? You know, I, you know, I look at, you know, Bay Ridge Gardens, and you walk out the door, and it's an asphalt, you know, barren asphalt parking lot. So you do have to address parking, you do have to address siding of the dumpsters. A lot of our existing developments, the units are facing inward and not, you know, embracing the sidewalk. I just want to make sure that you looked at what doesn't, clearly what doesn't work in our existing, you know, city housing and others, if you will. No offense to them, but we just don't want to repeat the same mistakes.
I totally agree with you. You know, I think as we implement this, those details really need to come forward and be addressed. It's definitely, in a car-centric world,
Yeah.
there's the disadvantage of creating placeless areas in a community. And so we would want to avoid that. I think stormwater management regulations and complying with that really helps bring green space closer to the building, because we have to, we have to address the stormwater management at a micro level. So it's going to be everywhere on the site. So it starts to really green up things by necessity, by state law, and the city of Annapolis. So I think that's going to help go a long way from some of these older projects that didn't have to comply with those regulations. But we want to have a front door on the street that is gracious and accommodating, accessible, so visitors can feel comfortable coming. But I think it's also important to have visibility in and through the building, so there's a sense of safety to get to the inside of the block where one might park a car. Again, we definitely don't want to have dumpsters near play spaces. I think that's one of my pet peeves in life, is when servicing is usually located next to where kids play. And it's just, it's-
Right.
It should never happen.
Yeah. You have to be really careful about where you put the back of the house, and also not, you know, lack of better words, or segregating, you know, low, middle, moderate income units as well, you know? You don't want to create that.
That will all be integrated throughout. There's no separation of incomes. It's all integrated, on a building-by-building, block-by-block basis.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I mean, this is sort of a flagship development that, you know, it will lead to other, I hope, redevelopment. I know Melissa has a whole, you know, planned. So, thank you again. Very impressive.
Thank you, Alderman-Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for the details on this. This is the first I've heard a detailed presentation. It's La Marina's and I realize, but anyway, I want to echo a few points from a colleague from Ward 3, as far as the grocery store. And I think, I think, let's get away from thinking about a standard grocery store, big box grocery store, because that goes against a lot of things that Mr. Lashinsky's put in the comp plan. I think we need to think smaller scale, something like a Quick Mart size that has fresh food available, but also quick things people can get. But that has to be a crucial part. And that's connected to what's going to be my next question after this one, which is, first of all, what's the distribution of the unit, the unit breakdown? As far as, you talked about mixed income, and it's, maybe I missed this slide.
In terms of bedroom size, or in terms-
No, the mixed income. So what's the, what are the mixed incomes that you're looking for as far as income requirements, income levels?
Right. So, pull that up while I'm talking to you. But ask me your next question, or I'll pull that one off and give you the exact map.
I'll wait, because my next question's a big one.
So, replacement, this is our public housing subsidized units. So that's 357.
Three, we might have one extra unit, but 357.
All right. The rest is unsubsidized.
Not unsubsidized.
Hundred percent of the balance is unsubsidized.
So are they going to be rentals, or pathways to ownership? Okay, so they're all rentals.
They're rentals.
All right. Thank you. So I guess, so the big question I had has to do with, so this is still going to be an increase in some of our lower-income housing in the city. And so, we have, so we have, you know, frankly, a lot of our lower-income communities are, they have crime challenges, public safety challenges, right? And it all gets to poverty, right? And so I think we need to think about this bigger picture. It's one thing to build the units, the houses where people are going to live, but what's the whole picture as far as, how are we going to be breaking the cycle of poverty and the associated cycle of violence? You know, we've had too many of our public housing residents and low-income residents die from gun violence, and even more traumatized. I mean, it's, it impacts all of us. And so I understand that part of this design is going to incorporate the, you know, some of the con prevention through landscaping, design techniques, which I appreciate, but that's really only part of the picture. What is really going to break that cycle of poverty? Are we going to be, because we can't just throw these people in there with no support network, right? What is that going to entail? Are they going to, how are we going to increase the social workers aspect, right? Are we going to be increasing the funding for our schools? Because this could be a significant amount of new students. And by the way, this project, all those 300-some units would not have to comply with our adequate public facilities ordinance, because it's lower income. Who's going to pay for the increase, you know, mobility, allow them to get around town? Those all have a cost, and they're all part of breaking that cycle of violence, but especially the social work. There's the police component, too, but I don't see the police, they play an important role, but I don't see them as part of breaking that cycle of poverty. So that's-
So, part of this planning process, those are great considerations, is that this is not a housing rehabilitation project only. The Choice Neighborhood, Neighborhood program is just that. We address, or make efforts to address- We address or make efforts to address issues that need to be addressed in the neighborhood. The reason why we have so many partners and need so many partners at the table to execute this is that we have many needs to address through this process. We have the Anaronda County Public Schools, we have Luminous at the table, we have ABD at the table, we need the entirety of the different departments of the city staff at the table. We have many other nonprofit entities at the table. We have the Y, we have countless agencies at the table who have expressed interest to help, either through providing services to our community or through other means, resources, connectivity to address the needs. The reason why we took so much time to do those surveys is to first find out what the needs are because we can sit and assume what we think the needs are, but then there's actually the viewpoint of the residents, you know, that live there. And so, and through that, we learned a great deal. So, and it takes a combination of all those services, all that programming and redesign so that from an organic standpoint, the neighborhood is more conducive to public safety. So as we are rebuilding, we can redesign safety aspects into the development to help reduce and mitigate some of the issues that you are talking about. Also, when a neighborhood is not marked and identified as low income, the, there are a lot of changes that come along with that that can be very positive. No one should be able to identify someone, someone's income based on their address. The entire point of renovating this site is that this development would be indistinguishable from any surrounding comparable housing types so that you would have no clue what someone's income is. So therefore, the possibility of there being, let's say, an increase of crime or perception thereof of crime in this certain type of neighborhood is gone. Because how would you know what someone makes? Because it's a brand-new neighborhood and where everyone is interspersed and integrated, unless some neighbor wants to share with another neighbor what their personal income is. I mean, that's up to them. But that is the whole point of redesigning a community so that a community in and of itself is not marked, which unfortunately, through years and years, many public housing communities have suffered from this as that community where X, Y, Z happens, you know, as opposed to just another community where people are living and trying and, you know, trying to make the best of their lives. And yes, they do face challenges. But when I read the Annapolis Police Report, which I read every single day, I see a variety of criminal activities happening all throughout this city. And it's pretty surprising to me. It's not really localized. But that doesn't mean that the perception...
The deaths are often localized.
Is not, you know, is not the, is not always as accurate. And so, you know, so that's what we, that's why we need all the different partners at the table as we're designing and redesigning the community to raise these issues, which is why we're communicating with you all now. This is not going to be a plan that we bake and come up and craft and then present to you for approval. This hopefully would be a plan that you would have been intricately involved in throughout this process. So by, the approval times are a formality because this is actually your plan.
Sure.
And so that's really, you know, why we're here today. So we like hearing all of the suggestions from everybody because we can incorporate, you know, a lot of your concerns and suggestions as we move along.
We're running out of time.
Could I just add, there's some very specific strategies in the plan to what you've just asked. So one, there is a strategy around improving access to health and wellness services. There's a, and the plan includes a proposed health clinic space onsite. So I just want to flag that specifically, that's in the plan. The other strategy is around access to quality education as well as youth services. That's another specific strategy is where partners are identified. And the third big element of the plan on the people's side, the investing in people's success is around increasing household incomes as well as employment outcomes. So I just wanted to flag that. I think a lot of the slides focus on sort of the bricks and sticks. I just wanted to flag...
And I'd like, at some point, good to get those details as far as what that, what are the services you're going to be, and programs you're going to be doing locally to break that cycle because that's key in my mind. And I think that we also need to include, and I also agree with the remarks as far as, you know, folk who are lower-income, housing that's lower-income should be indistinguishable from the rest of it, right? But I think where the rubber meets the road is we need to make sure the services are going to be there. And that's where I think, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be having the plan getting developed and you have some of that already. I think we really need to get that ironed out because what we have currently been doing has not been working. You know, we have residents who are still having health issues with mold and brand-new housing. We're still having incredible amount of people dying from gun violence. We still have, in that, just right next to this neighborhood, incredible amount of gunfire happening. And so I just, we really need to be, and that's, those are going to be the concerns, I think, coming from the public as well. So I think continue, when is your next opportunity to, your plan to reach out to the public and talk to them more about this, by the way?
So the plan, the full plan with all the details, including the micro-details on the supportive services strategy, we presented back in January?
No.
April. And then drafts submitted to May. We do, right now, are planning the final community convening and the celebration of the plan. I think it's tentatively October, date to be determined.
Mid-October.
Mid-October. And, but the details on sort of the supportive services strategies are in the plan and the link is also on the website as well for some of these additional details.
Can that be sent to us?
Absolutely. We'll send you the link of that. I want to be clear. So we've got all of these strategies reflecting on the resident priorities and what they've said they need and want. Money is still needed to be able to lift up those strategies, right? So to be able to change, for example, what the Housing Authority is doing right now, part of the design of the supportive services strategy to have this change is a robust team of supportive services and social workers working with families to connect them to opportunities. That costs money. And so the grant if awarded can pay for that, but absent a grant like that, the Housing Authority is going to have to secure financing to be able to deliver on those services. That's what's missing right now.
Right. Okay. So two more questions?
It's five o'clock, so can we get one more in? Do you guys want to, can you stay?
I mean, so the question, the question, I guess, has to do with the environmental issues. So for development like this, so basically, I think, let me start with a kind of easier one. The SPA code, I have a lot of concerns about the SPA code, our SPA road development plans because we have contamination on that property. We've tested the fields, I think we've tested part of the public worksite, we've not tested the rest of the property, we've not tested the water over the riparian area. And now we're talking about putting low-income residents, potential or other residents, doesn't matter who, on contaminated land. That is kind of getting the cart before the horse. We need to figure out what the contamination is like on that property and then figure out, I think, what the property might be able to support or not and what would be safe for people. Because when I'm hearing about all these, your desired unit numbers, that's where I'm like, oh, gosh, that's putting the cart ahead of there. Because there are also other environmental considerations, even on the other property, as far as afforestation requirements. That's baked into the state law where properties that have of this density who need to get up to at least 20% forest cover on the property. Hopefully, that's been incorporated into your unit numbers because that may end up adjusting it. Same thing with stormwater management considerations. You're proposing to put a lot of asphalt on this property, a lot of impervious surface. Now, if it's redeveloped, you're going to have to comply with our new stormwater regulations, but still a lot of asphalt. I'm wondering if there are ways you can look at to, parking lots, for example, could be perennial pavers. You probably don't want to do much structured parking, but that's another nice way to reduce parking spaces. And I think you mentioned you're looking at the LEED neighborhood certification or just general LEED certification?
It's a part of like the requirement that the CNI process asked us to kind of go through that and kind of set a schedule or preliminary kind of focus on that. So we've kind of done that. I think as it goes into implementation, it's, there's variable different sustainability strategies that can be applied.
Yeah.
Like Enterprise Green Community, USGBC, LEED, and those, but they'll get refined as we keep moving forward.
Okay.
Just to comment on the SPA road, because we agree with you, right? That when we talk about the SPA road side coming into this conversation, that is presumed that that side has been remediated, not as-is. And that's part of what the city is working on right now because absolutely, that side needs some remediation. The city is working on applying for funding to do that remediation and so forth. So just, that is part of the assumption. We're not talking about developing a site that's contaminated at all. I mean, that wouldn't be approved anywhere by anybody.
Yes, but I think even the assumption that, yes, ultimately can be remediated, but the big question is how much is that going to cost? Because that is potentially millions and millions of dollars to remediate that property. It may be more cost-effective and safer for just to turn it into some kind of open space, right? Maybe a couple of housing in areas that aren't contaminated, but, you know, I don't know, you're not very far in the planning process necessarily, but doing something like environmental assessment and forest delineation, your basic assessments to figure out what's going on there would probably be a good bet before you put your cards down on a certain number. We met recently with the public works staff who are overseeing Phase One investigation and then a Phase Two environmental investigation. In 18 months, they say they'll know the extent of any contamination and that'll basically tell us, you know, what's realistic. Okay. And, you know, certainly the cost of remediation will go up if there's any kind of groundwater contamination, but we'll find out. Last quick question, just I need to ask, because a friend of mine lives down on intersection with Park, Park Avenue. And if you, I don't know if Julian or somebody could zoom, or you can zoom in there, but they had issues with people driving previously, currently there's a parking lot, but one of the egress for the parking lots used to go right towards their house. And they had, I think, two people drive into their yard, into the house because there was an egress pointing right towards them. So in this case, it's showing a dead end, again, right towards their house instead of having connectivity with Park Avenue as far as having the street coming through the community. In a previous iteration, I think it showed having a community garden in that space where there's now the dead-end road. So I just think that's one of the things that it's very in the details and the weeds, but I know that's been an issue before as far as having connectivity with the adjacent roadways. That dead end just kind of sticks out like a sore thumb to me.
You mean a dead end for Park Avenue? I'm not quite sure I understand. So Park Avenue...
At the top of your project with those eight homes, it looks like it's a dead end there.
Yeah, we could definitely extend that over.
Well, I think moving is, just having it connect to a road instead of another dead end, I think, could be something to look at. I'm sure that resident will be in touch though about this.
All right. Thank you very much, Alderman Savage. Alderwoman O'Neill will close us out with questions.
Thank you. The beauty of going last is a bunch of my questions were the answers. I could check them off as you're going on. I wanted to just circle back really quickly to the 600, 650 number. One of the slides, you talked about the lack of accessibility, it was less than 5%. Of those 600, 650 units, is there a defined number of accessible units?
Not a final number yet, but it will meet or exceed the local requirement in addition to be right-sized for the returning residents who require an ADA-compliant unit.
Okay. And currently in, do we have a number for currently in Harbor House? The number of units versus the number it will grow to?
Right. So right now, so this site, which is the blend of both sites, right? So this is what we're looking at here between 600 and 650 units at this site.
So it'll be treated as one site, not two sites.
So basically, 300 new units in the two properties, give or take?
Give or take, yes.
In the whole.
In addition to the 357 that we have to do.
Right. So if I'm somebody...
She's saying 300.
Oh, okay.
To get to the 600 mark.
Right. So if I'm somebody that currently lives on Madison Street in one of the buildings, those are buildings that are clusters of 12 apartments, I could expect to have a similar apartment in the rebuild with new neighbors around me. So that just, okay. Because I haven't seen plan, I see that you're looking for larger buildings instead of smaller, clusters of smaller buildings, right?
There's a variety.
It's a diversity, range from, you know, townhouses up to some kind of mid-size multifamily. So buildings that might only have nine apartments and buildings that might have 12 apartments, up to the larger buildings closer to the center, which are reserving for mixed uses. You know, they actually would have an elevator, which, there's no elevators there today. So that helps us get to large, more fair housing units altogether throughout the site.
And the smallest building is on four stories.
Okay. As somebody who delivers food boxes on Fridays to that area, I know that that is the hardest route in all the 15 routes we have throughout the city because it's either upstairs or downstairs, no matter what apartment number it is, it's upstairs or downstairs. And I hear a lot of residents that would have liked to have grown old in place, not being able to do so. So that's where I'd be really interested in, one, elevators are a nice option, but two, those accessible units. And then my second question was, I see the green space, I think it's beautiful. Does that green space include basketball courts?
It does. It does have a basketball court.
Thank you. That is the biggest issue of some recent redeveloped properties that we've had was that when they were redeveloped, they basically added green space but took away, yes, it's impervious surface, but they took away that basketball. And we had testimony at our last council meeting about the number-one reason why we have some youth crime is that there's not anything for them to do. So I'd be very interested in making sure that in the whole process, we get back to that, making sure that we've got basketball courts and...
We heard that from the residents, so yes, that's assumed in the design.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and the presentation today.
Thank you, Alderwoman O'Neill. Any closing call? Hello, City Manager? Yes.
Thank you very much. I did have a, I did send something to the council I'd like you to read, and it's sort of a looking on the sunny side of one of these projects that I was involved in elsewhere. And it addresses a lot of what you brought up with services and how the communities change, and this is what they're doing. And I think that brings us to a question Dewan asked, is maybe you could think of, because you've been involved in so many of these, some that we could go look at?
I can do that.
Let me just quickly, I just, yeah, I was about to say, remember DC? I can't believe you all don't remember all of those gorgeous mixed-use developments that we went to go see when we took that council field trip to Elica City and all of that stuff. Just, yeah, think about that. And then lastly, just Melissa, congratulations again on the Morris Blum. And I do have, I don't want you to think that I don't have any faith in this project. I do 100%, and I have 100% faith in you, and I've said that since the beginning. And so I do look forward to supporting this. Every questions, concerns, of course.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any closing thoughts from you?
So we just appreciate you all taking the time to listen to the progress of this project, and we hope that from it that you can be inspired. project, and we hope that, from it, that you can be inspired to even start thinking of what we can do even more. And so we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
The agenda has been completed.
Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, this session is adjourned.